Okay, thank you for your patience, those who are watching us at home. And we will go ahead and get started at 6:05. Okay, so I will call us to order and we'll roll call because we have a member at home. Mayor LaChapelle.
Hi, here.
Maren Goldstein.
Here.
Ben Hershey.
Here.
Sam Hunter.
Here.
Laura Scott.
Present.
Cindy Krasinski.
Here.
And Megan Harvey, here. Okay, so we are live and going here. I'm going to hit record. That's hang up, so I won't press that one. That would be a little different flavor for the start.
We've done it before.
So everyone is aware we have a backup recording going. We are also on Google Meet and live with East Hampton Media. And a few quick announcements before we introduce who is here with us, our guests here today. I am acting chair this evening. Cindy Krasinski is at home. And I will turn it over to her in just a moment to say a few words about that. And so Laura Scott is our acting secretary. So Cindy, did you want to?
Yep, thank you. So I just wanted to extend my apologies for not being there in person when Representative Carey gets his award and for Meredith in my last meeting. However, my immune system, since my daughter passed away, has taken a toll. And it's the reason why I haven't run for reelection, but it's also why I'm not attending in person right now. I'm battling two infections, but I'm really thrilled that I'm able to participate virtually. So please know that I'm there in spirit and at least on TV and know that I would be there if I could. That's it.
Thank you. We miss you certainly. Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Do we have any gifts?
No gifts to report at this time.
All right. And this is our placeholder for our student representative updates. Do we have Mackenzie McCarthy? Yay, hello. Come on up.
Mackenzie, are you going to do?
Um, I hope. I actually, I hear back Thursday, so.
Biggers crossed.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to share a few updates with you about East Hampton High School Student Council. Kids Night Out for age children, for children aged five to 10, is this Friday, December 15th. Kids Night Out offers babysitting services, which we are using to raise money for the leadership conference in March that takes place on Cape Cod. Student Council is hosting a Spirit Week next week. We're also hoping to build in activities to build a positive climate in our school community. We are currently selling candy grams. All proceeds will be donated to Special Olympics of Massachusetts. Student Council is working on completing the binary of excellence for submission. This highlights all leadership, community building, and charity work for the year. Lastly, Student Council is working to build a stronger community connection with the middle school, especially with their student council. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a middle school rep at this point?
So the middle school representative made the, one of the teams at the high school so has a game tonight. So we'll be here in January.
Okay. Lovely. Awesome. And then if I may, I'll turn this over to Mayor LaChapelle, who can introduce the folks we have in the room with us and turn it over then to Liz for presentation of an award.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for attending and listening in online. Tonight, we have a very special honor for our state representative, who started his public service career right here on school committee. So he is a representative near and dear to our heart and knows exactly what it takes to guide a school department and get them the resources they need. In the room with us tonight is Rep. Carey's aide Kelly O'Neil, who makes everything go. Always have to introduce the staff. Senator Joe Commerford, Senator Jacob Olivera, Senator John Viallis as well. We have Liz Lefond from MASC and Devin Sheehan, school committee member. You've done everything for schools. And he will take it from now to present the award to Representative Carey. And Representative, you could please come forward. Yeah, right here.
I'm going to say a few words and I'm going to let the school committee really present the award and give the plaque because I think it's important, just coming from your hometown. So as the mayor said, my name's Devin Sheehan. I'm a past president of the Mass Association of School Committees, and I'll be the 2025 president of the National School Boards Association, representing all of the school board members across our great nation. And I was asked to come here by Executive Director Glenn Kuchar because he had a scheduling conflict that just came up, or he would have been here to present this. And he, it's unfortunate that he couldn't be here, but the Mass Association of School Committees yearly gives out two legislator of the year awards, one to a member of the Senate and one to a member of the House. And this year, the Senate member was minority leader Bruce Tar was the recipient of that award. But we're very fortunate to have someone, not only from Western Mass, but also from the Pioneer Valley and a former school committee member, being the House member receiving legislator of the year. I've known Rep. Carey for many years, being from Holyoke. Our paths crossed many times around St. Patrick's Day with different events and saw him move up from, actually, I shouldn't say move up from school committee to city council because I don't think it's a move up. But he started in the right place and got his foundation in the right place and has been so fortunate to join the legislature and be a voice for East Hampton, Hadley, South Hadley, and Granby, but also for Western Mass and has shown great leadership to support public education and to support the students of Western Mass and Pioneer Valley and East Hampton. So I know on behalf of the Mass Association of School Committees, they're proud to present this to him. And I look forward to his work in the year to come and some great things coming for him and the East Hampton and the region. Congratulations. Really, I would invite the rep to say a few words and I would really encourage all of you to do some pictures with him and his colleagues that are here.
Thanks, Devin. Thank you very much. Thank you, Devin. Thank you to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I was very, very surprised when they called and said that I was the recipient of this award and even more surprised when they said, "You can come to our conference in Cape Cod to get it, or we'll bring it to you in Western Massachusetts." So I said, "Absolutely. Come on out to Western Mass." As you heard, I got my political starter, my first time I was elected to office was to the school committee. I was elected in 2013 on my 29th birthday. And then I went to law school at night and had to make sure my class schedule didn't conflict with the school committee's schedule because I wanted to make sure I was here serving the students and serving the community. And it really has meant so much to me in all the work I've done. I always take with me the experiences from the school committee. When you're on the city council, when you're in the state legislature, people call you with their biggest problems and their greatest needs and when they really need help. And it can almost always be too emotional. But when it comes to people's families, people's students, people's children, there's nothing more important. And we recognize that in our communities, supporting the schools, supporting our teachers, supporting our students, and we recognize that in our families as well. And so it really means the world to me to receive this award. And I've got a unique House district. There's 160 House members. Some of the folks who've received this award in the past, it's really, it's humbling for me to receive this. I represent four communities and I share those four communities with three senators. That's a little unusual. But what's more unusual is the four of us being together. Usually I call Senator Commerford if it's about Hadley, I call Senator Viallis if it's about East Hampton, Senator Olivera if it's about Granby and South Hadley. And so to have all three of them here tonight really, really means a lot and just goes to show, as Devin mentioned, how important education is to Western Massachusetts. And so I thank them and I thank the MASC. But most of all, I always say to any school committee member, "Thank you." Because I've sat in those seats, I know it's a thankless job. I know it's not easy to do it right. And we've got a lot of good people in Western Mass doing this job right. So thank you for doing it and thank you to our constituents that reach out to you, that reach out to us, that guide us along the way and make sure we're doing what's best for our community and for our students. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll have to do a picture.
You got a picture with everybody?
Yeah, should we? Should we just go in front of this?
Yep.
And you typically arrange these. All right, come on around, everybody.
Senator, do you want to come up here?
You guys get one first and then hold down.
He just fell asleep like four months ago.
I was hoping when I was going, "He's got a baby."
John, is this okay for you? All right. He's got the.
Then we want all the senators to join.
Yeah, come on. Do you want to do one just with the three senators and you in the whole class?
Let's do all of us first.
Okay.
I should have mentioned, some people are still.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
I was going to say, you know, we're all looking at the same place.
I know, it's like we're camera first and whatnot.
Paul Marquez is on the floor.
All right. All right, congratulations.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I know, I'm going to do it right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't have to travel.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For all of your support.
Done my show, 12 years was good enough.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now let's see what we can do here. It will be difficult to top the excitement of that, but we will try to thrill audiences and keep the momentum going. So with that, we will continue on on our agenda. We will allow some walking and talking.
15 minutes.
You can clear the room and tell them we're having a meeting. All right. If you don't mind, we're just going to have you step slightly that direction. Thank you very much, with all due respect. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is public comment. So it is 6:18 and I will open up the floor for public comments. If you are interested in speaking, please raise your hand either here in the room or virtually online and you have three minutes. And I see an early hand going up, which is wonderful. And let's see, Sean, how do I unmute you? That is the question. Oh, here we go.
I think I can unmute myself.
Here you go, Sean. You're up.
Okay, thank you. So first off, I want to start by thanking both Maren and Cindy for their service to the school committee. So thank you very much for serving on the school committee during COVID and just for all your service. I'm here tonight to express my unwavering support for interim superintendent Maureen Benunda and to highlight the outstanding qualities that make her an exceptional and outstanding leader in our school district. Since Maureen has assumed the role of the superintendent, she has engaged with students, parents, and staff in a friendly and approachable manner, creating an atmosphere of openness and collaboration. I got to know Maureen as we both served food during the new student picnic at the high school. She was very welcoming to the students, parents, and community members she interacted with. The students at the high school know her because she eats lunch with them every day and I know she's at Mount View every day as well. Maureen has also made connections with the staff in our buildings. I have worked under five superintendents and I have never seen any of them acknowledge staff with 15 or more years of service with a gift of gratitude at the convocation. This really meant a lot to the people who have dedicated their professional lives to the children of East Hampton and really set a positive tone to the year. Our interim superintendent has an extraordinary ability to connect with people on a personal level, fostering a positive, inclusive environment within our school community. Maureen has established a personal connection with me and set up a safe environment so that we can have difficult conversations and disagree with one another in a respectful and professional manner. I'm also, if you don't know, the president of the union, so occasionally we have those difficult conversations. Maureen is highly knowledgeable and well-versed in the educational landscape, having been in the field for 47 years. When many educators want to get out and retire, Maureen wants to meet her goal of working in education for 50 years. I can see that her work in special education and as an administrator is a calling. The superintendent sets the tone in the district and Maureen has had a positive influence on me and other staff in the district. I'm no longer thinking about retirement, but reflecting on why I became an educator and feeling energized and excited to try new teaching methodologies. I firmly believe that Superintendent Benunda is an invaluable asset to East Hampton Public Schools. Her personable nature, empathetic approach, and extensive experience and knowledge make her a visionary leader who is dedicated to the growth and well-being of the students and staff. I urge you to consider my endorsement as a testament to the positive impact that the superintendent has had on everyone she has worked with and I encourage you to vote to extend her employment in East Hampton. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sean. Come on up. We recognize someone from the floor here. That someone is a future committee member.
Whoa. Do I have to say my street name?
Yeah, no, not street.
No.
Name and?
And street.
And street.
My name's Eric Ayed. I live on Deerfield Drive. I will be sworn into the school committee January 2nd, starting my first meeting with the school committee January 9th. Before I start, I do want to also say to Maren Goldstein, to Cindy at your house, thank you for doing what you've done for the past several years, a number of years. Your dedication is appreciated. I know from not even starting yet that it is a ton of work. So we thank you both for your service, a best of luck as you move forward, but appreciate you. From the last meeting that I attended, I'm aware that there will be a discussion and vote to extend our interim superintendent position to Superintendent Benunda. Having listened to the last meeting, being aware that the public is aware from the December meeting that this would be discussed and voted on in the December meeting. Yeah, it's December. And also from being made aware that the EEA is in favor of Superintendent Benunda, I would be, in my campaign, I made it very clear, I would like to listen to the voices inside of the building. We just heard a voice that works inside of our school buildings and so I would be in favor of this vote to extend, to give us more time to search for our future superintendent. And I just wanted to make that clear in public. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric. You have another within the room, Linda?
I'm Linda Markie. I live on Holyoke Street. And I'm here tonight again as a newly elected school committee member. I will be sworn in on January 2nd, be attending my first meeting on January 9th. I too was in attendance last school committee meeting and was, am aware of all of the different reasons why we would want to extend the contract for our interim superintendent. When I was campaigning, I spoke to a lot of teachers, parents, and parents. In every conversation, whenever Dr. Beninda's name came up, it was always with a lot of positivity. They talked a lot about her being someone who spoke with the people, who supported the teachers and the staff, who spoke with students and worked with them. I have a granddaughter and a grandson in the high school. My granddaughter was actually on the committee of students who interviewed and she is familiar with Dr. Beninda. And then we saw her at the play and she was so excited to see her again. It has been a lovely beginning to know her and I feel very positive about us extending this contract for this time. I think it's very important that we thoughtfully consider the candidates for a superintendent in the future with our input from our community. I continue to say, we are a community. We work together. We talk together. We listen to each other and we try to make the decisions that are in the best interest of our children. So I fully support this vote.
Thank you. Do we have any others for public speak? You can raise your hand if you are watching at home. I will just give it a minute in case you, in case inspiration, inspiration, inspiration strikes. She asked, Cindy asked the secretary, "Do you see any hand raised?"
I don't.
Indication, I don't see any either. All right. On that note, we will close public speak. Thank you, everyone. All right. So I will turn the floor over to our superintendent, Dr. Beninda, and who has a couple of things to cover, a presentation, some appreciation, some updates. And also just wanted to review before we go into this, we had some good reminders within the committee last time to be careful to not speak over one another and to, you know, hold questions for the end of the presentation unless it's something that's a clarification in the moment. So we will, we look forward to sharing our excitement about the presentation when you are. Turn it over.
Hold it back up. Up.
That's the packet.
Oh, yeah. Hold on, just give us technical issues.
We had it set up before.
You did.
And you can start with the appreciation or the?
Yes, we'll start the appreciation. That'll be good.
Okay. If you don't mind me searching for it.
No, I don't mind. I would like you to start with the appreciation. I'll start and then I'll pass on the conversation. To acknowledge that the job of somebody serving on school committee is a very big commitment. You get phone calls from people that, you know, sometimes can be upset and they're really looking for you to help them solve the issues. You also have other, like finance and negotiations. There's just so many jobs that you have to do as a school committee member. And to have been on the school committee more than one term, meaning you know what you got into and you went for it again, right, is really also really important. It shows your dedication to the students, to the staff, to the families of East Hampton Public Schools. So tonight, I really wanted to recognize you for your work. It's important that, you know, you made a difference in the lives here of students. I can say only for being here this short time that I've enjoyed working with you on the committee. And I find that East Hampton Public Schools to be an amazing place to work, both for our district office personnel and for our school leaders as well as our staff. And I think they all should, are very thankful that you joined this committee and you brought your skills here to make a difference every single day in the school here and it's made a difference. So I would like to give Maren Goldstein a thank you from our staff and school committee here in East Hampton.
Thank you very much.
Yes. And should we call our applause?
We should clap. Then we'll let the school committee members say a few words and then we'll do Cynthia's.
All right. So I'm going to start us off and just give some appreciation. I'll let everyone kind of chime in after. But Maren has been on the school committee. I have worked with him on the finance up committee and so I've gotten a chance to watch how you operate and how you handle sort of the stuff that we've dealt with. And then before, just as a community member watching, you've gone through two enormously challenging situations and continued to show up and make clear-headed, level-headed decisions. You've gone through some difficult budget situations and the impact that you've had on the community is hard to signify. It's hard to describe how big of an effect it is. And I've learned a lot from you. I hope to, you know, continue in your footsteps. But I also have your phone number. So, you know, on finance committee next year, I wouldn't be surprised if there are some calls for some of your wisdom. You have shown leadership in really difficult moments and I am really grateful and I will miss you. And I want to give a chance for my colleagues to say something as well.
I'll go first. So I've known you for a very long time. I know where, I guess where the source of your dedication comes from, which I think is really admirable. And I want to make a note that one of the more unsung qualities of a school committee member is really being deeply intimately knowledgeable about the details of things like policy and/or finance. For Maren, that especially relates to finance. It is really difficult. I think 90% of the people who do this job are able to coast because of the efforts and expertise of members like Maren. And it's really invaluable and it increased, I think, it's why you saw the success you saw in your budget negotiations and in teacher contract negotiations. And it'll be a difficult role to make up in the coming terms, but you should be much more relaxed. Congratulations for that.
Thank you.
I'll go. It just gets better from here, I think. Well, so I've been on the committee for two years, but I was watching closely for two years before that and it was, you know, you really stood out around some of the big, complex issues, especially COVID. The COVID questions were phenomenally challenging and, you know, watching those meetings, it was always, it was, for me, like as a school committee member, you and Cindy have been models for how to kind of stand firm when the pressure is at its biggest and the most intense. And it was, it's always been, you know, a lesson to me to watch you create a kind of nuanced response to, you know, stuff that is not easy to deal with. And you've been like a leader and a model for my, you know, work as a school committee member. So it's been like an ongoing pleasure to get to work with you. And like the finance stuff is intimidating and I've often like watched you parse out details and articulate with clarity, you know, when everyone else is like, "Nope." You're like, "Wait, this." And it always helps us kind of see things fresh. So that voice, that perspective, invaluable, we're going to definitely miss that. But I'm super happy for you to be able to refresh in new ways. So thanks for everything, man. Yeah.
Yes, I'm happy to give you your Tuesday nights back, but.
Tuesday nights?
Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday and every night. I remember watching the meetings during COVID and I was just really, it's always good to know that there are people who know what they're doing at the helm and I always had that feeling with you. And especially in regards to, there was, in regards to finance, there were so many changes that happened during COVID as well, so the way that we approached the school budget. And I felt like every single week, and I wasn't on the school committee, but I felt like every single week, there was like a new game. It was just like, we were following these rules last week and now this week we're following this set of rules. And being able to do that and adapt to that like takes a really precise mind and I have really appreciated having that with you on the committee. But I'm glad that you're going to get some more time to be precise about other things. And, you know, I have really appreciated all you've done for our community and thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam.
You know, Maren, the, I think the thing I most appreciate and actually have used our relationship on school committee and city council and mayor as an example of how not. have really appreciated having that with you on the committee. But I'm glad that you're going to get some more time to be precise about other things. You know, I have really appreciated all you've done for our community, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam.
You know, Marin, the, I think the thing I most appreciate and actually have used our relationship on school committee and city council and mayor as an example of how not to agree and to throw some brudy, nasty tone back and forth, and at the end, still get the job done and not blow anybody up on Facebook. And it sounds tongue-in-cheek, but I do, I respect. You've brought a whole new level of finance to the school committee finance committee, and I think you asked for and got a lot of structure that the city hasn't seen in that subcommittee and made it a more productive conversation, but we're also more looking forward than we have before and really looking at forecasts, not just kind of hairy eyeballing it. And I respect that. I appreciate your work, and I appreciate the dialogue back and forth, even through the tents. And I think it's a great example of how more public relationships should go. Enjoy your extra time.
So my turn?
It's your turn if you would like a turn.
I would like a turn. So Marin, you are probably the best finance chair that East Hampton has ever seen, and I mean that honestly. You're an advocate and a friend of the budget. You are a fierce fighter, but you will also work with everybody. You will talk to everybody, work with city council, you work with members of the community, you work with the mayor. You are organized. You understand that budget, and you are clear and concise with helping us to present the material in a way that the public can understand this crazy complicated budget that we have. So I have really such high respect for you as finance chair. It was the best vote we ever did when we started it. You've also been a building school, school building committee member and a great voice for building a responsible school, and I thank you so much for that. And then I thank you for your time as just a voting member of the school committee. You sit there and listen to both sides. You have this wonderful, magical ability, when we're all disagreeing with each other, to kind of figure out where we actually agreed and parse it down to a very concise motion. And often you throw out the motion that finally brings it all together. So I thank you so much for your work, for your balance, for your brains, for everything you have done, and really, your shoes are going to be very hard to fill. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cindy.
Okay, so now Cynthia, we want to talk about you. Like, this is your gift. We'll drop it off tomorrow at your house. And it's, in it, there is a very special gift there for you to have you always remember what it's like to be on school committee, and also the big difference you made, always thinking about the students here.
Mayor Lushkal, did you want to start?
Sure, yes.
Go the other way.
Mark, crying. Cindy, you amaze me. Through COVID, through what your family has been, through the losses, getting to know the rest of your family and JP's family when you had a loss and then a second loss. Your eye on the prize as far as students and where students should be and what they deserve has always been your focus. I do not know how you've done it in many times, and you've always said, been very clearly, this is what keeps my mind straight, and the children and the families of East Hampton Public School, as well as having your expertise for many years of teaching and assessing children. I think that you have given a very broad brush for everybody and entering point for people to understand what a school department does, but also from a teacher's perspective. The, I was just going to say, as a mayor, I've certainly given you a couple of challenges as school committee chair, but also challenges that you faced, and you faced them with grace and courage, and you did not waver from your values for our community and did so with integrity. And I will, I will always, always respect you for that. Thank you for your steadfast grace in leadership and public service.
Thank you.
Cindy and I started our, my first tenure on school committee, Cindy and I started our term together, and then she has stayed on ever since, and I, you know, went and had and raised a kid for a little while and then came back. I feel like one of the things that has been really cool has been, like, learning this process alongside you and the ways in which I was able to learn so much more, especially in regards to, like, working together with different groups of people from your leadership. I remember during COVID, watching the meetings, you know, from home and just being so relieved that you were there in that chair position, like, just, you know, keeping everybody calm. I've always felt like, you know, I didn't really know what tomorrow looked like, but I knew that we were going to get to where we needed to be. I've always known that the children in the schools are at the top of your priority list. There's never any, I've never had any concerns about any other politics at work or anything like that. I've always just been really appreciative of the example that you set as a leader, and I'm going to miss you so much. But I also am really excited that you still live really close, so I can come over to your house and bother you if I need help with something. You know, and I know, like, I know that this is, and this is one of the great things about a community, you know, you're not going to be on the school committee anymore, but you're still a part of our community. We still appreciate your input and your gifts, and they will continue to go on, and you will get some, some time to do other things that you need to do as well. So I really appreciate everything, especially the last couple of years, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will go next. Cindy, I'm looking at you on my computer screen. You're right here in front of me. Words are not sufficient for the role that you have played in this community. I would echo so much of what my colleagues have said. I just, I look at you as a person who has held down a group of people, focusing on the teamwork amongst them, focusing always on our shared strengths and how we move forward together as a unit, even when we disagree, and we've certainly disagreed a lot. I, your integrity is second to none. I have, I, every single time that I have wavered and felt lost and been confused and had questions, I have called Cindy Kuzinski, and she has wisely helped me navigate things far beyond just school committee. She's now, unfortunately for Cindy, she's now my close, my close friend, and so you will not be able to get rid of me. And I will, just like Marin's phone number, it's on speed dial, and I'll be checking in. You have given so much to this community, and at times, sorry. At times, you were not treated well by this community, and you still gave everything. Words are not sufficient. Thank you. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
I want to pick up where Meghan left off, that I think grace is a really beautiful way to describe Cindy. Cindy is so extraordinarily dedicated. That doesn't mean that I always agree with Cindy, but when I've watched the work that she does and the advocacy, I never once in all the years she has served have questioned her unmitigated dedication to the students and the families of this community. I believe that every decision Cindy has ever made, she had with her whole heart the best intentions in mind. And I have never seen a public servant in this community come under fire the way that Cindy did. And I would say, having known her through that time, I, in all the years I've known Cindy, I have never heard her speak an unkind word about anybody, ever, even her sharpest critics, even the people who did not know her, who spoke so poorly about her. I'm grateful for you, Cindy. I think we owe you a really deep debt of gratitude. I'm hoping that there's a lot more peace and comfort and joy in your years to come, and I hope that there's a little piece you can carve out for us to lean on you, particularly in the coming term, because you have a wealth of knowledge that is just incredibly valuable. But most of all, just deeply admiring of your grace. You made your family proud, Cindy, and you made your daughter proud.
I'll jump up. Oh, I can please. Cindy, I've got a really bad sore throat tonight, so I'm not going to be able to speak too much here, but just, other people have already said it, but I think the integrity to which you brought to your role, the leadership through COVID and all of the uncertainties and all of the unknowns and all of the sort of juggling different information and still having the focus on trying to figure out the best thing we can do for our kids in the very next day. So I just want to thank you so much for all the work and look forward to continuing having you as my friend for the rest of our lives together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely building off of what's been said, but the word grace has come out. That is for sure what I would use, but also unflappable, phenomenal strength, like, for me, a kind of legendary model for what strength looks like, not just through the last spring, which was a tornado for all of us, but especially for you, but through, you know, COVID before that. I keep thinking about the idea of like a steady hand, like, no matter how rocky and difficult things could get, it always felt even when you were sort of speaking and helping us kind of move this thing along, like, whether it be just a simple vote or like the elements of a meeting itself, or just bigger picture kinds of concerns. Clarity, integrity, a model, again, similarly, but a model for what it means to lead, which is an important part of this role. COVID, the superintendent search, but also it was really an instructive thing for me to get to go to those site visits with you last spring, and we went to all three of them, you know, in the, in the sort of pageantry, if you will, of the morning with all these people coming in. And it was really pretty amazing, you know, to sit next to you and get to kind of represent East Hampton in that moment and to watch you guide them, to tell us what we needed or to kind of like, just showcase what we're in need of. I feel really lucky to have had a chance to be on this committee with you, and without question, this city, this district, the children of this district, the parents of this district, the teachers of this district, the admin of this district have all benefited like unbelievably for your presence and for your, for your work here. So like, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I too am looking forward to texting you and calling you and being like, please help, because I think you, you're still here, and I hope, I hope we can continue to like utilize and benefit from your experience. Thank you.
Thank you. If I say too much, I'm going to cry. So let me just try to do this without crying. I will miss all of you. I'll miss the work. I really enjoyed it. It is a passion for me. I am not disappearing. I do have to get my health up where I can function and be out and about and be my old energetic self, but I'm working on that. And absolutely 100%, call me, call me, call me, the questions. I'm very excited for the new school committee. I'm very excited for our future, and it has really been a pleasure working with Superintendent Beninda. I just am very happy with the choice that we made. I'm so happy with the choices for our replacements of Sam and Laura and our incredible team or our incredible mayor. So I just want to thank everybody. It is a fun, an important, wild ride, but it is definitely something that I find gratifying. Thank you so much.
And again, hard to follow, but I am going to turn it back over to our superintendent for our presentation.
Okay, so, see what we can see. Oh, wait, hold on. Can I do it just this way? No, I can only do it in here. Can't share your screen.
Oh, definitely. Can you, can I see?
Why not? Well, hold on, hold on.
You did it before. Yeah, you're in.
There we go. I think I just, I pressed it 15 minutes ago, and then, now let me see if I can share it as in slideshow view. There we go.
Wonderful.
There we go. You should be all set.
Heidi.
I'm here.
Oh, you are. I didn't need to make you a co-host, but I did.
Okay.
Great.
So there had been, in a past school committee meeting, there were some questions about getting some information about vocational education in East Hampton. So Heidi and I have done two visits. We spent a day at Smith Vocational, I met with the superintendent there, and Andy stayed with us for a very long tour and nice conversation regarding what they offered at Smith Vocational. And then we also spent a day at C-Tech together, also meeting with the superintendent there and the, also the principal of the school, and also did a really nice tour there also. So we're going to just share a few slides tonight with everybody, because there are questions from parents regarding their choice to attend Smith or C-Tech. So we hope by this presentation tonight that we'll offer some clarity to that. So Heidi's going to do the first couple of slides, and I'll do the last two.
All right. My name's Heidi Bye. I'm the middle school counselor at Mountain View School. Not only do I help students with social emotional skills and peer relations, but I'm kind of the liaison for eighth grade transition, and with that comes a lot of questions about vocational school, deciding which vocational school to apply to. And it's pretty much a year-long process. Some families kind of know what they want, some families need more guidance, some families require multiple meetings. Sometimes I sit with the students and apply, fill out the application with them. But I made a few abridged slides of what I've done and what I presented to students and added some more for the school committee on the policy. So first of all, about vocational schools. Vocational high schools provide a sequence of courses in specific skills, commonly known as trades, that help them for a career. So they attend academic courses in an area, and then they attend vocational courses in the other. Families receive a letter from me in September. I tried to send it out before open house, because I'll be at open house if families want to talk about it, about our district's policy and about my role as a school counselor, helping students prepare for high school. Thank goodness for technology, because students now apply online, and I receive a notice about the application. It has changed. It used to be immediately. For one school, it's immediately, and for the other school, they wait until February, and I send the grades, I send the information, discipline records, everything that's needed for the application. But I also provide a Chapter 74 tuition form for the parents and the students, for them to fill out and for me to send to the superintendent. In March, all students choose courses at East Hampton High School. We even have students who apply to vocational school choose their courses as well, because we are unsure who's going to be admitted at that time. Usually it is the end of April and maybe sometimes June, where students figure out where they're going. Applications for Smith are due on March 15th. The final deadline for the Chapter 74 non-residential application is April 1st every year, so it's easy to remember, it's April Fool's Day. So this year, it's going to be Monday, April 1st, 2024. And I keep a list of all students. I frequently remind them, call parents, email them, because that's the only part of the application that is not online, and handling paper can be very hard, people will misplace it, and I have plenty of copies and will provide it for them. So between September through April 1st, I do meet with families and talk about students' individual goals, plans, clarify what the shops offer. We have some students who look at the shop and see the name, but maybe have a different career path in the future, or a different career path idea in the future, and I kind of just clarify for them, like, what is the difference between applying for a trade versus going to an academic school like East Hampton? The other thing that I also have to be wary of and work with parents of is students who are school choice. That is a very specialized population, because every district has their own vocational policy. And we have students... And we have students who are school choice from other schools and other towns. And I have to communicate with those families about what their district policy is, connect them with their superintendent and make sure that they understand what is presented for them. So a lot of families, because in the past, students have been automatically accepted to vocational school. And that's not really the case anymore. It's really an application. They look at seventh and eighth grade grades, seventh and eighth grade attendance, discipline records. There's a recommendation form and CTEC has a interview. It is more for the school to see if they, how they are personality-wise. And I, one of my favorite parts of this is that I always offer students to practice their interview skills and give them like a little heads up to decrease their anxiety. Some students are accepted, some students are waitlisted, and some students are denied. And I am there for support no matter what happens. We have some students who get accepted and they change their mind. I am there to offer it. So as you see on this slide, you will see what's, what is offered at Smith Vocational, what is offered at CTEC and what is offered at both schools. In the next slide, we are going to explain it more, but the way, oh, Maureen, would you like to explain it?
Sure. So there is an agreement that, that has occurred in all vocational schools throughout Massachusetts. And what that agreement is, is that there'll be one particular school that represents that vocational school for that district. So in this case, the agreement is for CTEC, which is Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Educational Center in Springfield. That is a agreement that has been set and approved by the state for the students to, that come, that live in East Hampton, they're going to high school, that want to use a tech school, that is the school of first choice. Now, there's also Smith Vocational High School, which is in Northampton, Massachusetts. And you are able to apply there only if you choose two areas. So the areas are animal science or it's called agriculture or natural resources or animal science. That is also if you need to want to attend from any other district. So for example, when I was in Worcester, I was paying for two students to come up to Smith every single day, transportation, and they were in agriculture. So anybody that applies there, if it's not their school that they've been assigned to, can only go there for certain subjects. So they would, let's say that a student is interested in going to Smith Vocational from East Hampton, they would have to apply in the area of animal science or agriculture. They would then attend, if they get selected by Smith Voc, they would then attend an exploratory program, which would be in four areas. One of them would be either animal science or in agriculture, if that was their, what they were going for. At the end of that year, at the end of that exploration, which is actually going on right now there, they, their instructors fill out a rubric in all four shop areas that they're exploring. And the students would then be accepted into those shop areas based on the score on the rubric. If they are not accepted in their shop area, which would be the animal science, or they're not accepted into agriculture, they're accepted into some other area, the agreement is that they cannot go there if CTEC also offers that course. So that is how, how that works. We don't expect students to leave in the middle of the year since the exploratory occurs. We are letting students finish the year and as we know, we're talking about ninth grade students who are making a transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. That's really a big transition for kids to make. And then, you know, they, they have to leave at the end of the year if they do not get into a shop that has an opening at Smith or they get into a course like culinary, which is already offered at CTEC. The following year as a sophomore, they would be transferred out of CTEC. So that, that's how that process actually occurs. And I think it's really important from a budget point of, oh, yes.
This is just pertinent to that slide. So I'm just
Oh, sure.
About the electrical and the plumbing. That doesn't appear to be offered at CTEC, but it wasn't listed, like I'm, so I'm wondering.
How's that work?
Yeah.
So how that works, so let's say I'm a student and I'm at Smith Vocational and I really want to go into carpentry or plumbing, electricity, those three are not offered at CTEC.
Well, the carpentry is.
Cabinet making. Cabinet making is different than carpentry.
Yeah, let's go, can we go back to two slides? It'd be easier for others to see.
Yeah, look at this slide.
There you go. Yes. So if they were getting, so they do not offer cabinet making is what I meant to say at CTEC, they only offer it at Smith. So if I was a student, I went there and I got into, I actually got into the cabinet making, making, cabinet making, we would allow them to stay there because CTEC doesn't offer it.
But they can't apply. They would have to apply
They'd have to apply for animal science.
Agriculture or animal science.
Get in there, yes. In order to go in there, those are the only two subjects, that's the agreement. They have to apply for those two. And then they go through and they do exploratory and they take exploratory in four areas. If they then get into one of those shops that are offered at Smith, that are not offered at CTEC, they have to fill out a new application tuition form for us and we allow them to stay.
I have a question about the agreement. Would that be better at the end of the presentation about how we can, what are the, when does that agreement renew? At what, at what point do we have opportunities to amend or revise that agreement? When's the best time to discuss that?
So I don't think that you have an opportunity to do that. It's because you have, every school has to pick one vocational school that is their major school. And that, that happened oh, so many years ago and actually was a case in Boston where that started, where kids were going to school at, in Lexington. And they therefore were not going to their own tech school. And obviously that tech school wasn't being successful in the Boston area. So that's how we got to this where, that's one of the reasons we got to this where every city, district, town has to pick one that is their tech school. And then there'll be, there are other rules as to how you could go to others.
That all makes sense. I guess I'm curious about broadening what students are allowed to apply under, if they would be allowed to, I don't understand the restriction on the application to the agricultural studies. If there are a handful of other programs that are only offered at Smith, and so that would be the revision I might request to make at the very least.
So I don't think the school committee can make that revision. That actually comes from the state and that's the agreement that is made. So we could not
More information on that.
Yeah. But that's, that is extremely helpful information because that was the part that I've been missing this whole time is why can they get in with these two agricultural courses? And then there's other, yeah. It makes, it makes more sense now. I appreciate the
Especially for electric and plumbing seems to be two of the most popular
Right.
Highest interest, greatest need programs. So figuring out how to streamline that for families, I think would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you. In a bit. All right.
Can I just add one other part of it is that actually, let's take the student now that went to Smith for agricultural, animal science. And they didn't get into those areas and they did not get into an area that is only offered at Smith. So let's pick, for example, culinary arts. So they got into culinary art shop at Smith. They would not be able to stay at Smith. They would have to go to CTEC.
Yeah.
Yes. That's the agreement. That's why it's, it's very clear that it's written that way. Now, the other thing that a district can do, which, which I don't personally agree with, is that we could say to the Smith student that did not get into agriculture or animal science, but went to electricity, that we're not paying for you to go to Smith. You now have to go your sophomore year to CTEC, go through another
Right.
Exploratory, see if you like any of the things that they offer at CTEC. And then if you don't, you can go back to Smith.
Right.
Well, we don't do that because that, you're sending children two different ways.
All over the place.
Right. So the, the best way to do it is to get into Smith for those two areas, explore, explore four. Try to do really well and get into your shop because if you don't get into any shops there, then you do have to go to CTEC. You can't stay there.
Right.
I do encourage all families to just like broaden their horizons and check out both schools and make the decision for themselves. I think that's really important. And students can, some families are confused and think, oh, once I apply my student to one school, they have to go to that one school. I'm like, no, you can apply to both schools. You can get accepted both schools and then choose. You know, you can't go to both schools, but I think it's really good to just broaden your horizons and maybe visit both of the schools and have, keep your options open, visit both of the buildings. And it really like, we went to visit both schools and it's really nice to actually physically see the school in person rather than go online or talk to friends. We, I always get surprised at some of the responses I hear from students after a visit.
I can say that I enjoyed the visit and I think Heidi can say too, at both schools. They, they both had wonderful programs. They had very committed staff members. The administration was very committed to make sure that every kid is happy and gets the tools that they need to be successful. You know, the, the difference between the two is that Smith is, you know, one full week of academics and then one full week of trade. And because there are so many
All at Smith.
At Smith.
At Smith, yeah.
And at CTEC, you go either in the morning or the afternoon to CTEC and you get your academics at the, at the high school.
Right.
There is something also that I wanted to mention is that criminal justice at Smith is a very popular course. Criminal justice will be offered starting next year as a career pathway program at CTEC. So next year it will only be a career pathway program. It won't be a 74, but the following year it would be a 74. So students under the agreement that got into the criminal justice program at Smith in two years would have to go to CTEC because that's the program that's being offered.
Not students already matriculated there, but students who are applying to be admitted.
Yes, yes.
And do they, if they are in, accepted to, excuse me, criminal justice at Smith, do they get sort of automatically transferred over to CTEC? Like they wouldn't have to re-go through and, and
They wouldn't even be allowed to be considered to be accepted at Smith.
No, they, they could go to Smith for agricultural, animal
Right, so they go, sorry, if they, if they get accepted into Smith in one of those two and then they do the exploratory session
Yes.
And they end up getting approved and into criminal justice.
Yes.
Then they have to go to CTEC. But are they automatically in the criminal justice program at CTEC?
Yes, they are.
Or they don't have to do exploratory?
No, they don't, no.
Okay, it's just a straight
Because they already got into criminal justice, so they would be in criminal justice at CTEC.
And can I ask Heidi a question as well? Well, for both of you really, but so when you're talking to students, is like the idea that you talk to them like, hey, if you're interested in electricity at Smith, you got to put your application in for agriculture. That's like your approach for how to get there? Is that like, is that, is it like an open, I don't know, secret's not the right word, but like, is that the strategy for getting in to one of the other programs? Does that make sense?
So it is the strategy.
Okay. It's the open strategy. Like that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
This is a, this is a recorded
Yes.
They must know that. Right, okay.
I think it's well-known in the community. Like I think people have figured that out without even it being said. To be honest.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you. Okay.
I think it's worth saying again, though, that they're, they're both great programs. I mean, an opportunity for students to have so much exposure to vocational education is really amazing. Not many school districts have that opportunity of having two possible programs that you can get into. And especially animal science for large animals. It's unique. This is the only place you can go for large animals and agriculture. They are, Smith told us, rebuilding the building that burnt down a few years ago and they're applied also for small animals now. So it will eventually in the next year or two have large animals and small animals, which students that want to be veterinarians would be very interested in that tech in going. So I, and I think the two of that, you know, they work well together, Smith and CTEC to try to get kids what they need.
Oh, they do work really well together and I know that they're in communication with each other. And a lot of times if I cannot answer a question, I feel very comfortable saying, I will direct you to one of the school counselors at CTEC or Smith, and that's a question for them, not a question for me. Because I know they handle it in such a professional manner.
Yes. I just want to go to the last slide.
I was, yeah, I'm excited about the last slide.
Okay, you're excited. Okay, so here is the comparison cost for both the schools. So you can take a, a look at the, the rate. Right now, we do have 45 students at Smith Vocational and 44, so it's pretty even, right, at CTEC. And there's the difference of the tuition, transportation, and the difference of the total cost. So, you know, it is, you know, over close to $5,000 child more per year to go to Smith Vocational. So it, as you can see, the bottom line there is, you know, makes a difference.
Why is
The transportation?
I was about to ask you about why the transportation was so much more.
Seems so backwards. Do you have any idea why that?
Do you want to answer that, Nick, on the transportation?
That would be
Be good?
That was Heidi.
Oh, sorry. Heidi, did you want to say something?
Um, I was about to say, like I said earlier, that would be a really good question for, did they, I think they did cover that briefly at our meeting, Maureen, about the transportation. Did they? Or am I not correct? What do we meant with CTEC?
What they said is that CTEC has their own transportation. So they, it's cheaper because they own the transportation. They don't refer it out to any other company. So they, they own the vans and so therefore gathering, that's why that is cheaper because they do their own transportation.
We are paying that cost directly to CTEC.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. The transportation cost you see for CTEC, there's a midday run that brings kids to EHS from CTEC. So that's why there's such a difference there. The Smith transportation run is a bus to and from the home to the school. And just so anyone who's looking at this slide, the bottom line for Smith, it should be 984. There's, that's a clerical error because if you add that transportation to the tuition cost, you don't get 948.
No, you don't.
Yeah. It should be 984. It's a clerical mistake and, and, you know, whoever made it, but I just didn't want anybody looking at it to say, well, wait a minute, that doesn't add up.
Appreciate that. So
Have we clarified? So I just want one tiny point. We danced around it, but I want to make it clear so that a student who attends Smith gets all of their education, Monday through Friday, every day, all day, every week at Smith.
Yes.
One week they're getting their gen ed education, the following week it's vocation, it skips back and forth. So they are attending one campus consistently, getting all of their education there, and that's 20K per student plus transportation.
Right.
CTEC, they're being bused out for half days to West Springfield. So they do half of the day in West Springfield, half of the day back in East Hampton or being bused back and forth.
Yes.
I just, I wanted to just make that clear for the public, that, that's one of the biggest difference, I think, between the two programs.
And how does that, I mean, and I hear somewhat, and maybe this is a question more for families. And so if anybody's listening that wants to give me feedback on this, the difference in like the student being bused from the high school to CTEC versus being picked up from their home and taken to Smith Voc every day, like is, does that change what programs the families decide that they want to apply their child for? Because it just, it seems like a very different logistics.
Yeah. And I, I'm unclear on the buses too, Nick. You said, there's two, you ride a bus twice if you go to CTEC, right? I mean, you're picked up in the morning.
You go to East Hampton High and then you go to CTEC, right?
You get, you got to get to and from.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you're getting to the high school.
But you may or may not get bussed.
You may or may not, you may or may not qualify.
But you're getting to and from the high school. It's the same, right? Am I crazy? Go ahead, Nick.
CTEC handles the other direction of the transportation. Right?
Handle one direction.
Superintendent Bernanda, I'm correcting that, right? Like for instance, if I'm a student that goes to CTEC in the morning, CTEC, the transportation will pick me up at home, bring me to CTEC and then that midday run And then that midday run that you see represented on the slide here brings me to EHS from C-Tech.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a, a question as well. I want to make sure I'm watching to see if Cindy at home has a question. If I can ask another question of you all. Um, so there's this agreement with the state, and we're talking about what, like, is in the, like, there's a lot of stuff that I think that we probably all have feelings about what we would like to see happen. What is actually on the table for something that school committee members can, what the school committee can handle and do? Can we make recommendations about completely swap? I'm, I'm not saying this is what we would do, but just what is in the realm of possibilities? Or is this just information that's unchangeable?
Maureen's like, what is she gonna say? I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm actually gonna give you a suggestion. I know. Maureen's like, we got along so well, and now, no. Um, what I, I would like to propose is that there, and I don't know if it belongs in the existing subcommittee structure or finance or whatnot, that we have a smaller group that takes a look at that-
Yeah.
As, um, a former vocational teacher, uh, week on, week off, and, um, also a little bit of experience with C-Tech. They're very different, and honestly, the schedule is about what kind of student you have. It, at first I was like, eh, they leave and, and for some students, it's great. Senior year, they're taking the vogue classes and they're already working in their field. But I, I do think that the school committee, like, it would behoove us to have a small working group, because there are a lot of changes. And there are also some opportunities with C-Tech and, and connecting with, um, possible internships in East Hampton businesses, like the, um, over the small machine and precision that, that could round that out, that we've just never had the space or time to, to do.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would also thank, uh, the superintendent, um, around approaching the students' first year. And we have had some, uh, cases in the past where exploratory has happened and there has not been a conversation for the rest of the year, what they're going to pick. And the student leaves Smith in December and never goes back because East Hampton's pulled them back. And it, and it's a very, this year has a diff, different feeling about it. Kids are supported, they get an idea of the environment. So, it's like one of the, um, little kind of nuances. And then the last is, there's a massive movement in Massachusetts to redo vocational school-
Yes.
Um, admissions, but also the decisions, um, you know, that we, we don't want C-Tech to add a, a shop just because Smith isn't, vice versa. Why can't we figure out how kids can just apply? And, and it's a very, it sounds so simple, but it, it's coming. It probably won't come in our lifetime, but, um, there's a lot of, I know M S A C is leading a lot of work groups and, and Mass, and MMA has just jumped into that too, but I would, um, I would welcome. It, it's a fascinating topic. There's a lot of other-
Yeah.
-stuff out there. Uh, Maureen and I have, uh, Dr. Beninda and I have talked about workforce development grants that compare with Voke schools and, and to get a sense of, like, what works for who, um, you know. And my only irritation is the transportation.
Yeah.
It's an unfair advantage, I feel.
The lack of choice. We allow school choice, we should have open school choice.
Oh, no, I was talking about LP back owning your buses.
Yeah. Well, no, it always comes back to that.
Lesson.
But yeah, no, and I agree. Like, I was, I was thinking about this, and I think that that's a great idea to have kind of a, a focused committee, just kind of learning about looking at this issue and then kind of seeing what's the best way to approach it. Would we, yes, Maureen, sorry. Sorry?
No, I couldn't have cut you off.
Oh, no, it's okay. I've, I've been cutting other people off.
Hey, go for it.
I'm, I'm an interrupter, so you have to interrupt me sometimes.
No, no, decorum. Go ahead.
Um, so anyway, I just, I think that's a great idea. I think we, it would make sense to start that after the, after we all get sworn in, just so that we don't take up too much more time, uh, tonight. But I think this, this has been extremely helpful, uh, and I feel like I understand a lot more about it now. I'm kind of, I understand a lot more about like what questions to ask in the first place, which is very, very helpful.
And all I wanted to add to the conversation was that both the superintendent and the mayor really did mention how much this is at the state level.
Yeah.
Um, and so, I mean, it's also kind of apropos that tonight we had a number of our state-
Yeah, they all walked away.
Senators here, they left before this conversation happened. Um, but I do think that's an important place to engage too. It's, um, to speak with that Representative Carey, right, to speak with Senator Comfort. Um, both of those people are going to be really important people. They've done a lot of work on education and they'd be very available for your conversations for the subcommittee that I would recommend. I would agree was a great direction to go with, so.
Well said.
Good, yeah. Cindy? You're muted.
Sorry. Um, I just want to thank, uh, Superintendent Beninda and Heidi for this great presentation. I can tell you, in all the years that we've had this conversation on school committee, I've never seen it presented in such a clear way so that the public and the school committee can understand the state restrictions, but also the dynamics. Um, because what you'll often hear is that there's no way that a student can get a certain program. And what we've just heard is that's not actually true. Um, you have to qualify for the program, obviously, and plumbing and electricity are two very tough programs, um, to qualify for. I keep telling all my students who were thinking about Smith Folk that you really have to, you really have to work on certain skills to, to get that. Um, but, so I want to thank you for that presentation. And I, I, you know, I really applaud the idea of doing a whole team approach to looking at the problem and seeing what adjustments can be made. Um, what I've heard year after year, and it's not just from superintendents, but I've heard, oh, there's nothing you can do, this is the way it is. And I agree with the mayor, things are changing. I think our outlook on vocational schools is changing. Um, and I think that, uh, I would really applaud having a, um, a team to really look at this in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Um, and I also want to thank Dr. Beninda for enthusiastically inviting me because I was a little nervous, but her enthusiasm gave me the bridge. Um, I did also want to add that I am very enthusiastic about helping students figure out who they are and what their future looks like based on how unique they are. So, if families do want to talk to me about any future planning or anything that are at Mountain View School, I'll be more than happy to schedule a time for them, our phone call or anything, because it is a lot, and it's a lot to ask of our young people to choose what they want at such a young age. But I'll be there to support them all the way.
That's great. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you so much.
Seems like you would be an excellent to have on our, uh, working group. So, stay tuned. And so the approach now, or the process from here would be that it would go on to the January agenda to discuss, and, and that will be after the swearing in. So, we will stay tuned another month, um, and you'll see.
And I just want to say thanks also to all the families that brought this up, uh, to us and continue to bring this up. This was the number two issue, I would say, that I heard while I was talking with families during the campaign. So, um, I really appreciate you all putting it on my radar because it wasn't something I had really given a lot of thought about. Um, and now it's something I think about a lot. So, I appreciate, um, I appreciate the nudge and, um, the advocacy, absolutely.
Can I make one tiny note as a pitch for vocational training too?
Yes.
That it's a benefit to the entire community-
Yes.
To support these kids to get into vocations.
Yep, absolutely.
And just as a final point, I saw that there was someone watching at home who put their hand up, and unfortunately, we're not able to, um, engage, uh, at this point. So-
Send us an email.
My apologies, I'm not ignoring you, it's just-
Yeah, send an email.
We're not able to engage. Any further discussion?
Um, just for the conversation in, um, uh, January, and if we do the, the working group, um, to consider or including that continuum, um, the Union Apprentice Program that works in a lot of vocational schools, but also if a student like Heidi was saying, sometimes a kid, uh, students aren't ready in freshman year or, and on 18, before they turn 18 and graduate, they can be connected to the carpentry, electrical, plumbing, and, and that's the right time for them. And then also with HCC, and I don't know how this works with-
Dual enrollment.
Yeah, the dual enrollment and the, the work certification, like if that, if that's a possibility for certi, I, I have no idea, but I think it's something we should look into.
Options.
And GCC, because they have some things HCC doesn't have, so.
Yeah.
Good point, there.
Yeah. Lots to explore. Any further discussion or questions for Dr. Beninda or Heidi? Okay. Thank you very much. Any, any further last minute things you want to throw in, or Heidi, before we move on?
I just want to thank Heidi. Uh, it was really a pleasure, uh, she has a lot of knowledge, and it was really a pleasure attending both the visits with her, uh, because she's the contact, uh, for both those schools, and she knew them, they knew her, and it was, uh, she's doing a great job there. So, I really wanted you to know that also. So, that's why, another reason I asked that she join me tonight.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you again.
All right. With that, we will move forward in our agenda. We are moving on to school committee discussion points. We have our standing updates from policy subcommittee.
Uh, we have no update.
No update. We have an update, uh, placeholder for the finance subcommittee.
We've not been to the last.
And we have no, we met two weeks ago, so it's hard to fit in a subcommittee meeting in that, that time. Um, and that brings us to, um, the item that we, um, pushed to the December agenda. We, when we met for the November meeting, um, we had a discussion and potential vote on the extension of the interim superintendent position. Um, and I just want to give us a little bit of background on the context of all of this, um, and then I will open it up for, for the discussion and potentially a motion. Um, so there is, uh, the, sort of the background of this is that when, uh, we were searching for an interim superintendent, this committee discussed, had a, a lengthy conversation about, do you go for one year? Do we talk about two years right off the bat? Do we say it's for one year, but we want to have the potential for two years? And the way that we ended things is that we offered a one-year interim position, and all acknowledged that there's absolute benefits to extending an interim to two years, um, which is not uncommon, and that we would see how the first, you know, the, the school year started and how it was going, and then make a decision at that time, given the stability of the situation, but also given, um, you know, sort of the, all the factors within our community, the fact that we have contract negotiations upcoming, the fact that, you know, we're, um, the timeline of the next search, all that kind of stuff. So that's sort of where it's coming from. And in the last meeting, we discussed this. We had a lot of great points brought up. Importantly, we, um, acknowledged, and we had a committee member who brought up, that it's really important that we have this, uh, put onto our agenda and that we discuss it, and that we leave an opportunity for the public, um, to let us know how they are feeling about things and what their opinions are. Um, and so grateful that we had a few who came to public speak today, including our upcoming committee members. Um, and so we, that, that gives the community time to, um, process and share input, um, which is going to be an important part of everything we do, is an important part of everything we do. Um, and so, I think there's a whole, like, lot of stuff that we can discuss around this, um, and that we started dipping our toes into in discussion last time, including, um, there's the extension of the contract. That's the vote that we are in discussion about. And then there's sort of like whether or not the state would grant waivers and that, and that is not part of this actual motion and vote today, just to be clear of what we're talking about. The, if waivers and the extensions we're talking about from the state are related to, um, Dr. Beninda is a retired superintendent, and so we would be getting a waiver from the state, um, to allow her to work as a retired superintendent. And that is separate from today's, um, not separate from the discussion, but separate from today's vote, just to make sure we all know what we're talking about. We also, the procedure from here would be, uh, based on what we talked about last time, is that this is, again, discussion and vote about whether or not to extend, uh, the contract. Hopefully it would be, uh, our offer would be accepted, hopefully.
That would be quite a twist, wouldn't it?
That would be, that would be a twist. Um, and then at that point, we would start talking about, uh, and this would be in January with our new school committee members, you know, what is the timeline and the procedure for the next search from here on out. So, we kind of had a lot of things that we discussed last time, and that's great to have lots of, uh, you know, discussion and, and things going on. But I just wanted to reframe for us and for anyone watching and for those who are in the room, that we are talking about whether or not to extend, um, that one-year interim contract that we offered to Dr. Beninda for a second year for the next school year.
Do you want to add the note about the six-month waiver having been granted through June?
Yes. So, there's some additional, um, complexity around how long those waivers are good for that come from the state. And from my understanding, I will say, due to things, at the state level, um, they tend to grant those waivers in six-month intervals. Um, so we are all set with the waivers through the end of this school year. So none of this is in relation to whether or not Dr. Beninda is here next semester. Semester, see there, I am talking about it. Uh, in January, um, we are, this is July 1st and on, we are covered, um, for this entire school year that was decided on previously. And if we offer the extension, then we will get a waiver, apply for a waiver for the extension. Anything else that I should clear? Any further discussion?
Two waivers.
Two waivers.
Unless they give us-
There's two six, yeah, two six-month intervals.
And you have to apply for, you can only apply for one at a time.
Right.
So.
But we'd apply twice, just trying to be clear.
Right. We, we've applied twice already, we've gotten them, and then the next time we can apply, depending on the votes, I think it's March 1st? March or May? It's an M month. And they won't-
I think it was March, I think it was March that you said.
Okay. Yeah, don't make more.
But that's a sort of, um, like, the attached piece. If we vote to extend, uh, offer an extended contract, then we will apply for however many waivers the state declares that we need to get through a 12-month contract.
Right.
That's two, one six-month, and one six-month, or nine-month, and whatever it is. That's what we will.
And my, my understanding, and this might go into discussion, my understanding is, is that we could vote on this. We don't necessarily have to do it today, but I do hear that there are people in the community who would like to kind of know what the plans are sooner rather than later. But in terms of like the actual application for the waiver, it doesn't really matter much if it's done now or in January.
Yeah.
I mean, the nuance here around talking about extending the contract is with the waiver, um, even before you apply for it, you need to demonstrate that you are pushing forward with a permanent superintendent search.
Mm-hmm.
So the thought would be, we've asked for an extension from the current and that the new school committee would, the, the proposed, kind of the deadline. And we will have to show DUCY that timeline and our minutes to prove. It's not just like scouts honor. Like, you, you have to show them the ads, you have to, it's, you know, I feel confident about getting it, but having to, had it, have it do again for myself, but also to do it for other administrators, it's, it's not a one-page email.
Yeah, so that, the process that would start in January, as we figure out what is the search-
Yep.
-timeline from here until, you know, next October.
They just said you can't apply until March.
But we'll be working on our internal timeline of what are we doing? When do we have parent forum? If, do we want parent for, I'm just throwing things out now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's not on this agenda item, so I don't want to get-
Let's not get too into the weeds. Yeah.
Yeah. Was that what you were gonna say? Stop talking about-
I was just gonna, yes, and say that the, I just want to quickly be clear. Even though you can't apply for a waiver until March 1st, you have to show the intent of the school committee to try to get to a permanent superintendent search, starting when we offer you the first contract.
Right.
You can never stop looking.
Right, right.
To get your, your waivers.
Right.
And showing, showing the timeline is the proof, which begins to show the state, like, we're, we're in this and we're, yeah, yeah.
Talking to, yeah.
But so tonight, we're just voting on extending the contract-
Yes.
And then we would be working together in, with the new, newly elected school committee to come up with that timeline together.
Yes. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, we're voting on whatever, motion.
Yeah, technically, we're not voting on anything.
We're about the same problem as we did last time.
We haven't put a motion on the floor.
So does, do we want to do that now and then have a discussion? Does that make-
I'll put a motion on the floor.
All right.
I would like to make a motion that we, um, extend Superintendent Beninda's contract, um, and it will be contingent upon a waiver, and we extend it for next year.
Can you be more specific for the notes, Cindy?
Sure. Wha- what would you like in specificity?
FY 2025.
For one year?
Yeah.
For a one-year, not for next year?
Yes.
All right, just one last year. Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah, for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, then. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any discussion, any further discussion?
I, I just wanted to say that, um, I really appreciated, um, the future school committee members coming tonight and, um, weighing in on this. So, I think that it is pretty clear that it is a pretty easy, um, and responsible decision to have us do this, and that will free up some of the time for the new school committee to do all the important work that they're going to have to hit the ground running. to do all the important work that they're going to have to hit the ground running.
Yeah, I'll, I'll like that. Thank you. It was really encouraging. It's important, I think, based on the elections and how, you know, we've been talking in the past several months, it's important to all of us who are serving on this term and in the next term, that we are working together, that we are collaborative, that we're in agreement, that we are in communication with our community about this, and so I appreciate that. And I also want to say thank you to Dr. Beninda for sitting through this discussion twice now, and we have heard such overwhelmingly positive things. And thank you to Sean, who came to public speak, to share with us how some of the educators in the district are feeling. We are grateful.
Thank you.
For your expertise. Any further discussion?
I mean, I'll, I'll jump in just because I wasn't here last time. I, I watched the meeting. For me, this is a no-brainer. Like, across the board, the feedback has been, it feels like 100% positive. Like, I just ran into a parent in the Mountain View parking lot the other day who was like, we're loving Maureen. And it's just encouraging to, to know that we have like a real, a real positive person at the head here. I also feel just, we, you know, I think you were talking a little bit last time about, you know, we're making the same mistakes as we were before, but I do think we need to slow it down. And this, this grants us time to kind of like space this thing out. And I, I also felt encouraged by the timeline that you sent out, Mayor. I just felt like we can really intentionally attend to all the elements of this search. So this is an easy fix for me, so I, I hope we can do it. And thanks for the, all that conversation last night. It was, it was pretty, pretty, you know, boisterous, but it was good to get it on the table.
Any further discussion?
I'll go. Um, first, I think Maureen Beninda is God's aunt. Thank, thankful for you every day.
Thank you.
I wish I could coax you out of retirement, but I think that's unlikely. I want to be clear to the public, I have been saying four months, continue to believe that I would prefer to extend our contract with Maureen Beninda for another year, to extend the period for which we're searching, to take our time and have much longer timeline to do that. As a finite matter of process, I still firmly believe the optimal timeline would be for the new school committee to be seated in January and to take this official vote. I am not convinced that the public has a real awareness of what's going on. I think they would support the decision, but I don't know that they are aware of or understand the decision that, um, is being proposed for tonight. So it is not anything against Maureen Beninda. I would not vote to support this tonight, although I, I support the idea. I do not support the timing.
All right. Any further discussion?
Can I, yes, I don't want to go back and forth, but this is something that the public has known. We were going to make this vote in November and December. We talked about it publicly at repeated school committee meetings, all as we brought Superintendent Beninda on board. So I do believe that the public knows, and I feel, again, very happy with the fact that two school committee members came tonight to speak on this issue. So I really urge everybody to vote yes, so that we can get this going. There's so much for the new school committee to work on together. There's so much reorganization that this takes one little piece off, off the plate, and holding a vote later on, just for the ceremony of it, when there is so much more that they're going to get hit with, just does not make any sense to me. So I won't say anymore, but I hope that we, we made a proposal, we seconded it, and I hope we go forward with it.
Mayor, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, I mean, similar to the vocational choice process, this is very similar. We don't have a lot of choice in the process of picking a new superintendent, if, unless we risk going forward without a licensed superintendent or a waiver. The, the state, it's extremely clear. It's just like what's happening in the schools now. If there is a position open, it cannot be taken down while the, the search is ongoing with a fully accredited person in that search. In the meantime, you can bring somebody who's waived in. The state will look and has looked, it's on the website, they will look, what did you do? And my push for this vote tonight, I agree with Cindy on ceremony, as well as thanking the two new school committee members who are coming on board in January, that East Hampton is moving forward in a logical, slow pace, and that the school committee that was embroiled in what we were embroiled for the last two years, has said, we know what has happened, we know the executive accession, executive session stuff, and we're comfortable in voting on if there should be another year contract. So that is out of the way, we can put that in our letter, and move forward with, with Cindy's correct, with a very arduous search. And, you know, we just talked about the vocational work group, and there's no, and everything else. So I would, I am in support of, of the motion on the floor.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. If there's no further discussion, we're going to roll call vote, even though we are mostly here because we have an individual at home, a community member at home. So we will roll call vote, and we'll start with Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Baron Goldstein.
Yes.
Ben Hursey.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes, with gratitude.
Laura Scott.
Tryna.
No.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
Megan Harvey, yes. Motion passes.
All right.
And we are thrilled to be offering a one-year extension. Our interim superintendent.
Contingent on the waiver.
Contingent on the waiver. Um, all right. So moving us along, we are now ready for our business update, and we'll bring Nick up to the floor. Thank you, Nick.
Good evening, everyone. Please allow me to start my report tonight by echoing what's been said by many so far this evening about Member Goldstein and Chair Kuzinski. I just wanted to thank you for, first of all, the opportunity to, to work here. I, I mean, you, you took a chance on a scrappy little business manager from Northampton and, you know, and, and my eyes, it, it's worked out well so far, and I'm, I'm really grateful for the opportunity. I've, I've valued working with both of you on the finance subcommittee. I was, I was proud of our budget process last year. I, I think we, we worked very well together to get where we needed to, and we, there's a lot of collaboration, not just with the committee, but also with, with the city as well. And I just, I thought the process was, was very good. So I'll miss working with both of you. I wish you the best in your next chapters, and I look forward to working with all of you that will continue to be on the committee as well as the newcomers.
Your second. One tiny subcommittee.
All right. Now for the good stuff here, business. FY '24 local appropriation report. At this time, 46.3% of our appropriation has either been spent or is encumbered. It's important to note, however, that some of the expenses that are currently in the general fund will be reclassified to other funding sources, such as our IDEA 240 grant and Circuit Breaker as the year progresses. So that number's like artificially high, but if you pull a budget report, that's what you're going to see right now. As always, continuing to monitor the FY '24 budget for areas to watch, and I'm presenting transfers tonight for your approval. Hopefully you got them in your, your packet. They're all over $5,000, which school committee policy requires a, a vote for, for that. The purpose of the transfers is to clean up some salary budget lines that will end up being in deficit, like, for instance, if a paraeducator moved from the elementary school to the middle school side, different account number. And, you know, paraeducators do move, you know, here and there if they're needed somewhere else. So, you know, in anticipation of trying to make the end of the year cleaner, I do like to clean these things up during the year. And also, in some cases, to move employees to new account numbers that will more accurately reflect the work that they do for state reporting purposes. So that'll be in your action items later. FY '24, should just say special education costs relief, clerical error there. But as part of Governor Healey's supplemental budget that was signed last week, $75 million has been earmarked for relief for districts for increased special education costs for this year. This is in addition to regular extraordinary relief that districts can apply for through Circuit Breaker. More information will be forthcoming, and Dussie's scheduling a webinar for districts once, you know, they kind of have everything in a row. As more information becomes available, I will work with our Director of Special Education to determine if we will qualify for funding from either or both sources. It is possible for districts to qualify for both. Will we? There's no telling until numbers are crunched, and, and some of these things can change from day to day as well, depending on, on the student for whom you're, you're applying for the reimbursement for. So we certainly do intend to apply and get as much as we can for this year to help us. The good thing about this funding is we would get it this year instead of next year. Traditional Circuit Breaker, you get the year after for your costs this year. Both of these pots of money, we would get this year. Traditionally, you would apply in March and get the money in May, but according to a webinar I was in last week, they're, they're thinking about, like, starting in January just because they, they know a lot of districts are going to apply, and it's certainly going to take time for them to process all of the applications and everything. So, so I'll be looking forward to doing that and, and getting the money in this year to help our, you know, recover some of our costs. In food service news, mid-year CEP implementation. As part of the law that made school meals in Massachusetts universally free, school districts are required to maximize the use of federal funding. The USDA recently lowered the identified student percentage threshold from 40% down to 25 for CEP eligibility. They've also granted a waiver to the Commonwealth that allows school districts to apply mid-year. Both EHS and Mountain View have been identified. I got a memo from Dussie last month, and both schools were on there. This is due this Friday. The change, it should not impact the amount of reimbursements we get for meals. It really just changes the funding source, which would become entirely federal. Maple School was on CEP when it was still open. No other schools in the district were. But, you know, this gives us an opportunity to have both schools in the district in CEP. It makes claiming a lot easier because of, the reimbursements are only coming from one funding source. It'll eliminate the need to complete free and reduced lunch paperwork next year and the, at the beginning of the year. Those forms won't go home, because basically your ISP or identified student percentage is high enough where they treat a certain portion of your students as getting free meals, even if they traditionally wouldn't. You know, it's, the whole formula is a little bit complex, and I, I don't know that you want me to get into it tonight, but in any event, that'll be a, a change for us. Couple side notes, we will still find, have to find a mechanism as a district to identify families that might qualify for other in-district benefits, such as not having to pay for a bus pass or athletic fees. You know, students that, that are directly certified through the state wouldn't, but we do catch some through those free and reduced lunch forms. So we're going to have to develop a mechanism as a district so we don't miss those families and, and, you know, create any sort of undue financial burden on them. However, you know, many districts throughout the state do this, it'll be very easy to learn what someone else does. And one last piece of this, and, you know, I, I don't, I want to say I'm about 99% sure of this right now, but I, I believe being in CEP would make this, either school eligible to be a summer food service program site. I know folks had asked about that in the past, so.
He's killing me, Nick. He's killing me.
That's good, isn't it? So, you know, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure, as, as I said, and the USDA did release their, like, radius map, which neither school was on, however, that was prior to the other schools being identified for mid-year CEP implementation. So obviously, if the schools will qualify, we will change our summer food service programming for this coming year. So some good news in the food service world.
I love good news in the food service world.
Me too.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
So I, I think you probably already answered this because it's implied what you said, but, so this is a permanent change, the 40% to a 25%. This is what it is going forward.
That's my understanding, yeah. We will have to reapply for CEP every, I think it's four years. You have to do like a renewal thing in June for the upcoming year, where you just give them updated identified student percentage numbers, just, you know, because if we ended up going below the 25, then we wouldn't qualify anymore. But I, our current ISP for Mountain View is about 38, and I think the high school is like 36 or something like that when I, but they want us to go off last April's numbers for our application. They're both still in the 30s, but not quite as high as they are now. So I'm not really worried about us dropping below 25, but we will have to reapply every four years.
Thank you. That, that number that they calculate, that factors in choice in students?
Uh, yeah, it factors in everybody who's in our roster.
Nice.
Yeah. So basically, what you do is you, you pull a report out of our student information system of all the, the students that are enrolled, either in our schools or even students that are in out-of-district special education placements. And then you upload it into a state portal called the Virtual Gateway, which is run by the Executive Office of Health and Human Services. And that identifies students whose families qualify through like SNAP or, you know, related programs like that. What happens then is it spits out a spreadsheet for me with every student in the district, and it'll say if they're a match or not. And that's how you calculate the percentage of students, right? You basically just, you know, divide that by the total enrollment and you.
Nick, can I just, I just want to add, especially off of Megan's comment, so this is through the executive office, right? So I just want to make the comment that nothing is permanent with our executive office.
No.
So please be careful about thinking that this is a permanent change.
Careful. Elections matter.
Elections matter.
Yeah, I mean, the USDA was the one that lowered the threshold, so that's, that's, you know, for the whole country. Really where this, this came from was the language of the law that made universal meals free going forward. Maximizing federal funding was part of that in, in order to help pay for it, essentially, because that, obviously, a lot of money in the state right now is kicking in a lot of reimbursements.
Yeah.
So there were, I don't know, probably 80 schools throughout the state that were on the memo that, that I got. So I'll have my stuff in by Friday, don't worry.
One more question, sorry. We're excited about this.
So when we're talking about the supplemental budget and being able to access these funds this year, will, and I, I forget where we are with the ARPA or Esser Cliff, are we able to plug those sorts of blocks or reallocate? I know that there's been some buzz out there about giving flexibility, especially to schools, that they're, they have a plan to spend down the Esser money, and they're trying to put more money into the budget so, so you can spend Esser sooner and still have, like, the extraordinary relief.
I mean, our, our Esser funding will be spent by the end of this school year. It's, it's all earmarked, so I, don't worry about having any leftover at the end of that. The funds here that we possibly could access could be used for any special education costs, you know, that we have this year. So money right now that's in the, you know, or I should say expenses right now that are in the general fund, I could reclassify that to this pot of money should we get it, and that'll make our, our general fund look better than it currently does, given the high costs that we have, you know, largely due to that 14% OSD tuition increase there.
That's my follow-up question. So I, I know you haven't done the, the crunching, but with these two extra pots of money being able to spend this year, does that hedge us against the 14% increase in, at a district? Will it help, or is it a year behind?
No, it'll help, it'll help this year, because you access the funds this year. They come from two different revenue sources. The 75 million, I was told last week in that webinar I referenced earlier, is actually federal money, which I don't understand how that's part of a supplemental state budget, but I'll let someone else worry about that. So that money, I, I can't, if I say we get, I don't know, $100,000 of that for this year, right? I spend that. I can't count that as an expense this year for next year when we apply for the Circuit Breaker that we get next year. If we get money from the extraordinary relief, I can count that. Best deal going. You essentially get paid twice on that. It's just, it's not terribly likely we're going to get that every year, but, but the, the 75 million pot, you can't. The folks from Dussie made that pretty clear last week during the webinar I was in. in. So a- anyway, as, you know, time gets closer, I mean, no more, I'll work with, uh, Antigone Lively to, you know, see A, if we qualify. I mean, it's really based on a per student, you know, formula and, and students that were on our circuit breaker claim form last year and, and what the costs of their education is this year. So, um, more information forthcoming.
Thank you.
Quick FY25 budget process update. Process, as you know, has begun. I've met with all principals and directors at this point and they have their templates to fill out for, for me. I'll have all of their budget requests by January 5th. That was their deadline. And I'll use this information to help build the first draft of the FY25 proposed operating budget. In the meanwhile, I start doing the district-wide stuff, like the transportation and the, you know, utility costs and things like that. So that's what I'm working on while principals and directors do their pieces. And, um, once I have all that information, it goes into a large spreadsheet and we work from there. Personnel report for November of 23, we had, uh, eight new hires, uh, most of which were substitutes. We did hire a maintenance mechanic, um, and a paraeducator as well. We had one separation, a special education teacher from Mountain View. No transfers during the month. And our current vacancies, we have a middle school librarian, still looking for a long-term speech language pathologist substitute at Mountain View. I have a paraeducator at the high school, um, the special ed teacher, uh, who separated in November. And you can cross the pre-K educator off because I signed paperwork for that yesterday. So, um, we don't have, uh, a ton of vacancies currently, which is obviously a, a good thing. Unless anybody has any other questions, I think that concludes my report.
Um, when you're talking about getting that, your meeting with the director, superintendents and whatnot around budgets, when the, when you're, they're presenting their budgets to you, are there any budget assumptions around increases? Is it level services? Is it, we know we're going to have 20 extra, um, fourth graders?
Yeah, we, we look at enrollment, um, you know, what's moving up. I mean, sometimes you have like a bubble class where there's six sections in a grade level and say grade four, uh, and then that would move up to grade five. But then you of course look at who's moving into grade four to kind of determine, you know, needs and if any staff members can be, you know, reallocated to somewhere else, you know, based on need. The templates that the principals and directors will give me don't have personnel on them. It's just their, it's their building or department-based budget requests. You know, personnel, um, things we, we sort of tackle as a leadership team as a whole. You know, so the, the costs or I should say the templates they're filling out are, are, you know, somewhat variable costs, um, like general supplies, instructional supplies, things like that. However, when I did have my meetings with them, um, what we decided we needed to do is, was take a look at, at, you know, software particularly that was purchased with the COVID relief money that will be running out. Do we need all of this still? Was it purchased just for remote and/or hybrid learning? You know, things like that, because, you know, there's certainly some things we'd want to keep, I'm, I'm sure, but we have to know that that's going to have to become part of the, the general fund if we, we do want to keep it. But, you know, it's good, um, periodically to review what you're using anyway because, you know, education changes a lot and times change and some things that you, um, used a while ago, you don't use anymore. There's no reason to keep paying for them because they've now been replaced with things that we, we use. So, um, those are the conversations that, you know, I do go over their staff list with them too, just to make sure I have everybody in the right place. And I know where everybody's working and, and everything like that. And then they give me their budget requests. You know, I do ask for justifications of things, I mean, especially if something, you know, goes up or, you know, dramatically down, um, you know, because they're, you know, that kind of thing will, you know, breed questions during finance subcommittee meetings and, and everything like that. So, um, obviously I don't know everything that goes on in a school, so I want to be able to answer those questions when I'm asked, um, during those meetings. So, um, we have about a month to work on them and certainly, you know, ask me questions and things like that during the process and.
Thank you.
If I can just throw in here two things. So one is, one question will be back to you, Mayor. Is, is there a point that we can expect to have your projected letter around budgeting?
I mean, middle of next week. I, I was, we just met with, um, our financial analysts and bond counsel and looking at capital projects. So, um, that meeting was much more positive than I expected it to be. So I, I've got to redo the budget letter a little bit and think about how to couch certain things of, um, and we're reclassifying a lot of expenses outside of the general fund. So it changes everybody's percent.
Okay. Well, that's helpful, obviously, then, for that first, for that January 5th deadline. The other thing to remember about our budget for next year too, is just remembering that we're going to be going into union negotiations and that's going to obviously have a big, potential impact as we're trying to plan that budget as best we can, because we have to sort of project it a certain level to, to, I'm going to forget the term right now, but the, you know.
The cost of living adjustment increase?
Yeah, but the, yeah, yes, but we also have to do, um, for negotiations, have to have, uh, benefit of the doubt negotiations to be able to go into that. So that'll be part of next year's budget.
I'm not sure who to ask, but do we have a timeline for negotiations to begin? I know it's the holidays and everybody's winding down that school.
I would anticipate February.
Okay.
And my understanding is the union will send a demand to bargain sometime after the new year.
Excellent. Okay.
That'll kickstart the process.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. So we are now up to our action items and I will turn that over to Laura.
All right.
And who, how about our secondor should be ready?
Yeah. Sue Colby is not here tonight, so I want to make a note for the public that I am going to have one motion for the budget transfers and then highlight each amount and leave it at that.
Yes.
And if we have to correct for the record, I consulted Robert's rules. I don't see anything that tells me I can't do that. That's what we're going to do.
I was about to ask about that, so thank you for doing that before.
All right.
Yes.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated November 16th, 2023 in the amount of
Second that.
All right. Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maron Goldstein.
Yes.
Ben Hershey.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, yes.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November 16th, 2023 in the amount of $716,269.99.
Second that.
Uh, Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maron Goldstein.
Yes.
Ben Hershey.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, yes.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated November 30th, 2023 in the amount of
Second that.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maron Goldstein.
Yes.
Ben Hershey.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, yes.
Uh, motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November 30th, 2023 in the amount of $165,951.20.
Second that.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maron Goldstein.
Yes.
Ben Hershey.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, yes.
Okay. This is going to be a long one. Motion to approve the budget transfers in the following amounts. and $80,635.
Second that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Maron Goldstein.
Yes.
Ben Hershey.
Yes.
Sam Hunter.
Yes.
Laura Scott.
Yes.
Cindy Kuzinski.
Yes.
And Megan Harvey, yes. Lovely. All right. So our next meeting, um, is with the new committee. So from, this is the last meeting with this particular group. There's a swearing-in ceremony on January 2nd at noon here at 50 Payson as of now, but stay tuned, I guess. I'm not anticipating a change in location, but I think it says that in the letter we all got, so. And then the first meeting will be directly afterwards, which will, I think Mayor LaChapelle indicated last time, because it's procedural, sort of figuring out chair and subcommittee, all that. Mayor LaChapelle will be there and then we'll have a regular meeting, um, tentatively scheduled for January 9th, but I believe determined.
To be determined by the new committee.
On that January 2nd date. So tentatively scheduled for January 9th-ish, but you'll get confirmation on January 2nd. I think that's all we have. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's got, come on.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Cindy, would you like to do the honors?
I'm second it.
All right. Uh, Mayor LaChapelle.
Yes.
Uh, Maron Goldstein.
Yes.
Ben Hershey.
Yes.